My promise meeting in order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, January 25th, 2021, and the time is 7 o'clock PM. We are present in our new board room located at Northfield Public Schools District's offices, formerly Longfellow School. In accordance with Governor Walz's state plan, this room has been set up per the plan's social distancing guideline. In addition, all those present at the meeting will be wearing face coverings for the duration of the meeting. Also attending tonight's board meeting via teleconference are Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, Kim Brisky, Director of Technology Services, and Val Murdestock, Director of Finance. This meeting is open to the public via livestream. A recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website. Dr. Hellman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, the table file this evening only included personnel items.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Seconded by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for residents, business and property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 PM today. All submissions that followed the district policy regarding public comment would be read now by myself, the board chair. We have no items for public comment this evening, so we will move on to announcements and recognition. Dr. Hellman?
Yes, I have one announcement and recognition this evening, and instead of me trying to do justice, I'm going to allow her to do it for us. So early today, we learned that Northfield High School junior Clara Falcongeist was invited to speak at Governor Walz briefing this afternoon at 2:00 about the state's new Due North education plan. So as you might imagine, I happen to have the recording here, and I'm going to play it for you. I hope.
To you Clara Falcongeist from Northfield.
Hi there. My name is Clara Falcongeist, and I'm a junior at Northfield High School. First, I'd like to thank the governor and lieutenant governor for this opportunity, as well as for prioritizing the youth's education with this plan. Today, I will be talking about several parts of the plan I think are important. To begin, something that is very relevant is supporting students during and after the COVID-19 pandemic. Personally, I'm a very outgoing person, so the closing of schools means I don't get to see my friends. But for many people, school is a safe haven, which is why supporting them is so important. The next priority I'm looking forward to is the expansion of access to opportunities for students in greater Minnesota. I'm in several AP classes, and I think they're a great opportunity, especially for students who want to continue onto a post-secondary education. What goes hand in hand with that is the expansion of career and technical education pathways. Everybody has different goals and interests, but what's most important is nourishing those and providing valuable opportunities. Lastly, something I'm very passionate about is the commitment to supporting students of color and indigenous students. Creating a diverse, anti-racist school environment is vital to learning for everyone, which is why I am so glad this plan is prioritizing it. Once again, I'd like to thank everyone here for being dedicated to our youth education and for allowing me to speak today. Next, I'd like to introduce my fellow student, Olivia Shaker.
So that was Clara Falcongeist, a high school junior who I think we can all agree represented Northfield exceptionally well today on an important stage. So we congratulate Clara. We thank her for representing us, and I just thought it was best coming from her mouth, not mine. Those are your announcements for this evening.
That's really fun. I was able to listen to it on the radio when I was driving, but it was way, way more fun to see her actually present in front of the flags. You're right, that's a huge stage. And we are fortunate to have so many outstanding students at Northfield that can have the courage to do that, right? Any other announcements or recognition board members have? Okay, we will move on now to items for discussion. Our first item for discussion is our technology services update, and we welcome our Director of Technology Services, Kim Brisky. Welcome, Kim.
Hello. Thanks for having me tonight. This is my first Zoom board presentation, so a little bit of a new experience for me. And that also means it's the first time that I have presented to you in quite a while. And part of that was by design, because it's been a really busy time, as you're well aware. But I am happy to be here to be able to give this update to you as well. I am unable to see my presentation deck, so I have to know what you are actually seeing.
I'm going to share it right here now, Kim.
Okay. I can start talking through, though. Basically, you've seen in the narrative and in the presentation slides, they're very similar. An overview of what's going well, some opportunities and challenges ahead of us, some key learnings that we've had in the past year or so, and a little bit of a summary. So with what's going well, really, the first thing I can say is our technology services staff has been outstanding. We have just a solid team of skilled technicians who are also providing an excellent level of customer service across our district. So our staff right now is not only skilled in the technology and in education tools for instruction, but also diverse. And we've just had a new staff member start today. His name is Mohammed Noor. He is from Owatonna, and we are just so excited to have him. So it was fun to have him start in the district today and to start meeting some people and learning our tools. And it will be one more person to provide exceptional service across the district. We are also very fortunate here in Northfield to have high-quality devices in every area of our district. So we've had our one-to-one iPads, of course, now for, well, this is the eighth year for students having iPads one-to-one. Of course, it wasn't K-12 at the start, but we have gotten it to be fully K-12 now. And that just happened this year. We were able to send devices home with every student who needed a device last year when we left early in the spring. And so we repurposed some of the devices that we had, and then we were able to purchase new devices for our staff, which allowed us to bring our kindergarten through second grade classrooms up to a one-to-one provision. So that is excellent. Now our teachers can count on that, that every student has a like device, an equality device, to get their work done and to be able to meet right now. So that's excellent. We do have our MacBooks out to all of our licensed staff as well, and we have added more as we've needed them for different support staff throughout, particularly this year. So many devices out to staff across the district. We also have Apple TVs in every single space where we can present in the district, which means that we can walk up, whether it's a student or a staff member, with their iPad or with their MacBook. They can connect wirelessly to a presentation display and begin sharing right away. So the level of collaboration that can happen, of student leadership, to be able to share their own work for a classroom or for a small group is excellent. And then finally, that teacher MacBook piece. We are in the fourth year of our MacBook lease, which is the end of it, so we will be looking to renew that lease. I will come back to you again in the next month or two to bring a lease. And in the time prior to that, of course, I'll be seeking some input from our staff and making sure that we select well moving forward.
Kim, you can tell me when you want me to advance the slide. I know you can't see it, but I'm on the first slide.
Yeah, go ahead and advance one.
Okay, so now on the Seesaw page.
Yeah, okay. So here we talk about that we have a lot of great products to facilitate learning as well. Of course, we were already using Seesaw and Schoolagey. These have become indispensable in getting content to our students, particularly now that our students are mostly distance learning. So even our youngest learners have been able to access their content, and we're fortunate to have these tools in place. And then we definitely invested in Zoom this year. So we have become very proficient in teaching, facilitating games, meetings, all sorts of discussions over Zoom. And our students are becoming so proficient at the same time in using the tools that are in front of them to complete their work and to continue learning. We have moved all of our phones over to IP phones, so that means that they are no longer the digital and analog phone lines, but they run on our data. And they provide the opportunity for us to have what we call the soft phone, which allows staff, teachers, admins, office assistants to make phone calls either from their cellphone or from their computer, and they look like they're coming from their school phone number. So that's a huge improvement, particularly for distance learning, where many of us are working from home or outside of our office, away from our desks, and we're able to access our phone and receive calls, voicemails, so on and so forth. And then finally, when we talk about access to learning, we've continued to improve our district's network. We have undertaken a pretty large project to improve from a previous design of network access that was maybe designed with fewer devices per students in mind or fewer devices per person in mind if you think of what you might be carrying with you at any time. I have three devices with me right now that connects to our network, and so that's becoming the norm, that there are multiple tools that we're using that are streaming content, and we have had to increase our Wi-Fi capacity. So we've moved to Cisco Systems as our main hardware for our network and installed access points in all of our learning spaces across the district. Almost, we will finish up with the middle school in the coming year, and that has been approved in our capital projects for the next year. So across the district, we have a really strong Wi-Fi network, which is excellent. And then finally, I can't say enough about our partnership with HCI, that they have worked with our families and with volunteers to find students who need or who don't have adequate access to the internet and to provide that for them. So as a district, we purchased 50 hotspots last spring, and HCI came right behind us and helped us manage getting those out. And then they also continued to purchase additional hotspots, supporting hundreds of students at this point with internet access, either through hotspots that they have purchased and are paying service for or through providing charter connections for families who can get a charter internet connection in town. So that has been just indispensable in the work that they are doing to be in touch with families, to provide language support where needed, and to really help all of our learners access content and be in touch with their teachers during this time. Matt, you can go ahead to the opportunities and challenges portion here. The pandemic has, of course, provided many challenges for us, but it has also provided a great opportunity for learning for us. So I mentioned earlier how proficient our staff and our students are in using the digital tools that they have to continue learning, even when they've had to change so much of what they're doing. We have staff and students who are up to the challenges in front of us for both synchronous and asynchronous learning. So sometimes our kids are all together, doing the class activities. Sometimes they're on their own schedules. And sometimes we have teachers who are managing both of those scenarios at the same time, and they're finding ways to do that. And so I think when we come back from this pandemic, we will need to be mindful to leverage the skills we have to continue to best serve our students. So there are opportunities for us moving forward to take skills from this pandemic time and to put them to good use, even when we can be back in our classrooms. We continue to need to plan professional development for all levels across our system. So we need a line that learning that leverages the devices that we have and the learning activities that the ways that they can be used for oh, I think I might have lost my audio here.
Nope, we can hear you. You're good.
Okay, thanks. The ways that we can leverage our tools for learning and to be creative in our use of technology. So that means some really consistent pieces, starting with even our administrators, so that they know what is out there for our classrooms and so that they can support that work in the classrooms. And also for our teachers and for our education assistants who work with our students and for our substitutes who come into our classrooms and they're technology-rich. And so we need to prepare them to walk into those classrooms and know how to operate the technology there. And that's been something that we've thought about, but not something that we have gotten done and figured out the best way to reach all of our people who spend time working with our students so that they know the technology tools that we have. And then finally, I think what we have seen right now is what I like to call living in beta. You never quite have the whole thing developed, but we're working on it as we're developing it and as we're using it. And when we are going through what we've gone through this year, we're growing a ton, as I've mentioned, and our systems are changing. Our instructional design and the ways that we collaborate and work together are changing, and we have seen some great collaboration in our district, partly as a means of survival and be able to get all the things done and partly as a, just a professionalism that wants, you know, has people seeking to reach all of our students in new ways and working together to do that. So when we move forward from this, when we are able to be, like I said, back in person and the pandemic is behind us, I think we've got a capacity that has increased. I also think we might, there are some of us who are going, could we just not have change for a while? Could we just have things back to normal and we could settle in a little bit? And then there's also, I think, some increased ability to manage change. And so I think as a leadership team and as teachers and as leaders across our district, we need to be mindful of what we can do to continue to improve our practice post-pandemic. And we know that the pandemic has provided challenges that have, you know, I mentioned, some people are looking for that change to stop, to get back to a normal kind of cruising altitude. And we know that that's true of staff and it's true of students, that some have had additional challenges. It's true of our families and parents who have had to work with their students, that there have been numerous challenges this year. And they have not fallen equitably on all of our learners and all of our families and all of our staff. So we know that as we return to some sort of normal, whatever that might look like, we're also managing some widening gaps in some cases. We have some who have thrived during this entire time and we have some who have struggled more. And so we will need to be mindful in how do we manage meeting the various needs that we come back to as well. So some key reflections. If you can move to the next slide, Matt. We've definitely seen that the COVID pandemic has increased our reliance on technology in ways that we never imagined. And so as, of course, someone who is a proponent of technology integration and use of the tools that we have in front of us, this is not the reason I would ever hope to need all of the technology that we have in place in our district. However, I'm grateful that we have access to the technology. I think we've tapped into some potential. And like I said, it's prepared us to use that technology as we move forward from this point in time. Our students are capable directors of their learning. I did mention that some of our students, of course, have had greater challenges than others. But we have seen even our youngest learners be able to follow some plans that their teachers put out, be able to complete work. They can find where the work is on their device. They can share it back with their class. And that means that they can also do those things when they're back in the classroom. Our students are ready to share their work, and they're able to do that. And they've had to do that now in this pandemic. And I think we can move forward with our students having a little bit different role in their own learning because they have learned a lot of the skill to manage their learning during this time. And so I think we have some increased confidence in even trying something new. We have people who, of course, at the start of the COVID pandemic, when it was very rushed and we all went home in the spring and had to figure things out pretty quickly, it was overwhelming. And we made it. People made it through that and got their classes working on Zoom. They figured out how to manage all sorts of little things, like how a student's name shows up on their Google account or on their Zoom account or that they hadn't used the Schoolagey submissions feature in the past, but now that was their only way. They couldn't just accept the work in their classroom, and they've done it. And so there's maybe some new ability to take on some of the technologies that are new to us and to figure out how to make them work. And even to know that if they don't work the first time, we can still go back and adjust and make it work the next time. So some of my hope is that we shift from needing to learn the nuts and bolts pieces of technology. How do I use this tool? What button do I press to make it do that? To how can I leverage the technology really for learning? So it's not learning the technology as much as the technology is what supports the learning. So I think those are the main points. Like I say, it's been just a year of constant adjustment and change. And I am really hopeful that we get to be back in person in the near future to have the relational part as in person as we can and to do that as safely as practical. And I'm also hopeful that we can take some really great learning from this time and apply it for continuous improvement in the future. So with that, I am definitely happy to take some questions. Actually, just looking at the slides here, I wasn't watching my presentation as I went, I guess. I put in a couple of photos there, and I just want to tell a little bit about them. So on the first one that has key reflections, it shows a kindergarten classroom, and this was just last week. And this is a typical picture that you might see in a kindergarten classroom before we did distance learning and now after distance learning for this group of kiddos. But you see a student at the front reading that morning message to the class, and that student is the one that's sharing their voice at this time, right? And they're up there reading. And these are kindergartners, and they're, I think, it's one example of how our students are ready to be in the front of the classroom and to be showcasing what they are able to do. And you can also notice how nice that classroom looks with that white board and that projector. This is the new Greenville Park. So you see that there's zero wires to connect a teacher laptop or add to that display, and they can just walk right up and use it. It's great. The next one, I had asked some teachers about some things that they've done in their classrooms, and this particular one, it links, if you click on it, Matt, but cell parts and analogies, this particular student. I looked through a few of them, and it's just one assignment. But it goes to a deck where the student is taking, you know, each piece of a cell and comparing it to basically a city. So functions of, you know, a city council and town hall and the water tower and the community members and things like that to say, how does a community work as an organization that's similar to a cell as an organism? So just some ways that kids are able to share learning that I think add value and have some creativity in there. So with that, I will definitely take questions that you might have about our technology services update.
Excellent, thank you, Kim. Well, just for the record, you were here in October of 2019. So it's been 15 months, and a lot has definitely changed. And you had no idea what was ahead of you when you were here in October of 2019. So questions, comments for Kim?
Good to see you again, Kim. Having been, I'm taking my dog for walks, I've missed you too. I have a couple of questions. On social media, some parents have been concerned about blocking unwanted apps. And I know you addressed that even on social media, but is that an issue?
Um, yeah, we have had some issues where parents have contacted us. I'm not sure of the one you're particularly talking about, but I do know that somebody reached out to me on one of those, and I was able to help with blocking a site that was problematic at the time. We do have our devices filtered for limiting adult content, even when they're not in the district. And we have some ability to filter further on our devices. So I have worked with families who have wanted that. And we have also, of course, and I just want to make sure everybody is aware of this, we have some new board members here as well since I've presented, of course. But we do curate the apps that are on our iPads. So students get apps from self-service, which means that they've been requested by a teacher or a staff person and put there for the age group that they've been requested for. And those are the only apps that they're able to install. Does it mean that there's not any distraction on the device? Definitely not. But they don't have access to the App Store to install all the games or anything that they want. And then on our district website, under the Parents category, if you go to the homepage, there are the top icons that are for parents and for staff. And if you go to Parents, there's one that has Technology Support, and it just has a few items there about our most basic kind of tools that we got across the district. One of the items there is how to use the screen type features of an iPad. So it shows parents how to set limits. So YouTube is one that I hear about quite a bit. But as you know, there's a lot of free products on YouTube. We just watched YouTube to see one of our students speaking at the governor's press conference. So the content there is excellent, and many of our teachers use it. But we know that a lot of times, there's, you know, there's a ton of content on YouTube, and kids are watching it for entertainment. And so is that okay most of the time? Yes, but maybe we need to limit it. So there are some instructions on how to do that. Features might be the biggest one we get for wanting to limit time.
Okay. And have you noticed parents becoming more at ease with the technology too?
I have had far fewer parent interactions this, well, actually, I've had fewer this year, but they've been for a variety of different things this year regarding the need to filter or the need to lock down iPads than I had, say, two, four, five years ago. So that could be the case. That is a yes on my part.
Okay, one more question. There's a kindergarten, the picture of kindergarten, someone reading the morning announcements. Is that right?
Yeah, the morning announcements.
Yeah. I noticed that with my kids, when they're gaming, especially like on Minecraft, and they're like motivated because they're at the screen and they have to read in order to complete something. I'm wondering, and I don't know if you have the answer, maybe Dr. Noone does, if the readings, if reading skills are improving ironically because we're actually on a screen or not. And maybe it's truly to tell or.
Yeah, I'll be happy to, let me chime in on that, Kim, and then I'll turn it over to you. So I think when we think about reading, right? I think that there are a variety of different ways that people think about reading, right? What we know and what our district is focused on is the science of learning to read. We've uncovered a whole lot about the brain. We know what helps the brain learn to read. And so there's a lot of theories and other things. But in our district, we focus on the science of reading. We're continuing to move toward that with the CCC curriculum. But one of the things that we know can be helpful is when a child is motivated by the content. So if I like dogs and I can read every book in the world about dogs, that's going to help you, right? Because it's about practicing the skills that we've taught you in the technical aspect of learning to read. So I think that we also have some debate in this country about what is worth reading and what is not worth reading. And what I would say is, from my perspective, I think anything that we have that gets kids to be motivated to learn to read is a good thing. And so I think that you're right, Tom. For some kids, the stories that go along with the video game, for whatever, as adults, we think about video games, some of those stories are very complex. They're engaging, and the words are on the screen. And that may be something that's, is that going to be the give-all? And that may be something that's, is that going to be the give all, end all for get teaching? No, but what we know is when a kid is motivated, that is a, that is something that is very helpful for us in that process. So, Kim, you want, if you want to add to that, please do.
Um, yeah, I was just going to talk a little bit about correlation and causation, that reading is such a huge, I mean, it's such a building block for what our kids need for all of their schooling, um, that of course we want to focus on reading and literacy at an early age. And those kindergarten students, you know, they're at definitely different levels of ability to read like truth of any, any of our ages of students. But um there there are so many practices in place to reinforce literacy skills and to build literacy skills. Um, they go into causation on a single one or especially a leak, like the technology is, I think, is is gouging to to draw that causation kind of conclusion.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Cory?
Yeah, hi, Kim. Oh, loud. Quick question about hotspots. You mentioned the district, HCI, providing those for families. Is there a set end date for families losing access to those hotspots?
No, there's not. Um, the ones that we've purchased and that Uger has purchased have a, or sorry, I was going to throw Uger. The HCI has purchased, um, have a two-year service agreement on them. So they're they're going to be in service for at least another year. Um, but then we can continue service on them as well. I've actually been in touch with Zach about how do we continue to provide internet because this business is not going away for families and it is an equity issue. We need our students to be able to access the internet from from where they're residents. Um, because we will, we will continue to have students who need that. Uh, just looking at numbers, we have two hundred and fourteen Northfield Public Schools APO students who have internet provided through HCI. So that's a pretty awesome contribution. It's one hundred and four families.
Excellent. Other questions, comments? Jeff?
Yeah, thanks for your report. I'm just curious on the hotspots. Who's the carrier on that?
Uh, we have some that are through T-Mobile and some through AT&amp;T.
Okay, are you finding, getting the speeds that you want out of both services? Because I mean, cell sites can be anywhere. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, we are, um, they've been adequate for our student needs. We had a couple that were brought back as not not looking early on and we were able to provide a different one. So maybe if they had it through T-Mobile, give them AT&amp;T and then that just worked.
And in the rural areas, they're working great?
As far as that, no, I haven't heard anyone who has gotten a hotspot and not been able to have a reliable internet connection.
Well, if not complaining, they must be working, so that's good.
It would be unlikely to not to not hear anything from people who have gotten it.
Thanks again for your report.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kim, for your report. I have two questions for you. The first is, do you find that technology is still a barrier for any students or are we pretty much past that stage? And the second question is, ha- are a lot more software products available in a, because of the pandemic? And if there are, do you see any really promising ones coming down the way that you think we should try?
Um, well, I think, I think there will always be barriers to some students in whatever area of our curriculum and instruction we're looking at. And so that's one of our constant goals is to remove the barriers. So whether it's a language barrier with a technology tool or um an internet access barrier or um, you know, we have students who are using multiple, multiple devices at home for learning. So um you get a kid who's on their desktop computer and using their iPad to watch a lesson while they're creating something else on their desktop. So um is that then say that the other student, as we, who doesn't have that, has a barrier? Maybe. They're they're not on a level playing field in what they access, that's for sure. Um, one of the main objectives in actually providing devices is that we we approach equity because we don't have any students, we have our teachers relying on that device to deliver content and to to see the students learning what they're producing. And teachers are going to cater to what that device can do because they know that every single kid has it and can access their content that way. And so that ability, I think, is our is our best step in reducing barriers because of technology. And then our, the next best one is the internet access. And so that partnership, like I said, with HCI is just invaluable in in reducing that barrier as well. Um, there will be other barriers and, you know, even distraction, something like that. That's a barrier for many of our students, not for all of them, but for many. So then we have to figure out how to manage the technology so that it's a learning tool, not just something else that's pulling them away from their learning. And um that's a hard balance sometimes. We're all, we will always have some barriers, I think. Um, and then the second part about software, there, there are so many awesome tools for learning out there. And so as a district, I think it's important to us to um to vet the tools that are out there and to determine which ones are are worth funding. Of course, um, when we all went home last spring from school, many of the the software content providers offered their products for free. Um, and I was weary of that because I think we want to be more intentional in our instructional practices and consistent across um grade levels. Um, so for vertical alignment, um, and ensuring that we're still aligning to our state standards and also ensuring that a student in second grade gets access to a similar set of content as another student from second grade, whether they're in a different class in the same school or in one of our other elementary schools. Um, so to quickly jump on a product, um, I'm not usually game for that. I'm very game for jumping on products that is something like creating um a stop motion video to show your, to show your learning or um photo collages or pieces like that, the, the creative parts or coding, um, things like that. Uh, content delivery needs a little bit more vetting and buying across all, like, content areas before we would jump on a new product. I don't know if that answers your question or if it skirts around it, but um I think the the best thing is to collaborate with our teachers and with Paul Blainston in ensuring that the that the tools we select are going to be used with with some end results in mind.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else have a question or comment that I might have missed there?
I was going to say something.
Yes, Cory.
Hi, Kim. Um, thanks for your presentation. Oh, there's a volume control on that. Um, I'm just um proud of that partnership that we have with HCI. What a powerhouse there. And um it's incredible to hear that our teachers have been working through synchronous and asynchronous models at the same time. Uh, you know, everybody had a huge learning curve, teachers, students, parents. So it's just amazing what um we've been able to do in this pandemic. Um, my question had to do with the current problems or um questions that you're getting with that technology. So in the spring, the big thing was couldn't get connected to the internet or didn't have the device. What are the, what are the the bigger issues now here in January? People have been using and troubleshooting these these issues for several months now? What are, what are the current um trouble spots?
Well, I'm gonna just knock on wood right now because the problems that we're hearing at this point are pretty minimal. Um, I I can't actually categorize that we have a kind of a large problem that we're tackling. If I, we're gonna say our our biggest need is direct support of students who who need that home, who don't have the direct support to keep them engaged, checking on them, whatever it might be. And uh, I mean, HCI also helps with that, enriching out the to families. And um, and of course, we have um Torch who is helping with that. We have AmeriCorps volunteers helping with that. Um, so right now, I don't think our our biggest barriers are in, and our challenges are in the technology itself. I think the challenges right now are keeping our students engaged with their coursework and and learning. And it's a, it's a long haul, so um it can get tiring to to be on Zoom still for your classes and um and that instant access to the teacher in there. And so for some students, they're gonna find a new way to to connect with their teachers and thank you too. And for some, they're not. And so really, it's that um increased support to the individual students we needed the most.
Thank you. Okay, any final questions or comments?
Thank you, Kim. I mean, this report was just so fun to read because it's just, you're so excited about where we have come through the pandemic and your vision about where we can go from here was just really inspiring. So, and thank you for all your, all your work and your incredible team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to our next item for discussion. Um, is my mic within an area where people can hear? I know we're all kind of learning how close to be, so if I start to echo or you can't hear, just give me a sign. So I am next on the agenda, actually, as summary of the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. And it really is my honor to do this. Um, so we, uh, so this is the summary of the mid-year performance appraisal for the appraisal period of seven one twenty to one one twenty-one. So the six-month mid-year appraisal for our superintendent, Dr. Hillman. So for this review period, all seven board members, including those two board members who were still on the board, Ellen Iverson and Rob Pardee, during the evaluation period, they had completed the eval as well. So there was all seven board members. Um, the evaluation covers the many facets of the superintendent job responsibilities. The um numeric ratings are at a one to five scale, one being low and five being high, for forty-four job responsibilities around eight major topics. So in addition to completing the numeric ratings, board members also provide additional narrative comments. So I compiled with the help of Anita Ozzy and summarized all board members' input for Dr. Hillman. For the numeric ratings, means were calculated. All written comments were shared verbatim, but were not attributed to a specific board member. As board chair, I met with Dr. Hillman on January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, to review this appraisal. So it's my pleasure to report that I, as a board, we gave Dr. Hillman an exceedingly strong performance rating across all key areas. His overall score was a four point nine one on a five-point scale. So um what I'd like to highlight now is where a lot, of course, uh, board members citing many, many um performance um evaluation, um, strong points of Dr. Hillman's work, but there were, his exceptional work was highlighted around three key areas. The first being uh the handling of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And I would like to read this so that um we, uh, as a group and also for the community to get a sense for where board members work with um Dr. Hillman's performance. So in terms of the handling of the COVID nineteen pandemic, Dr. Hillman is a leader who has met the moment. His incredibly adaptive leadership skills were proven day in and day out throughout the pandemic. Dr. Humans, Dr. Hillman's communication with stakeholders has been stellar. The multiple modalities employed to provide timely and comprehensive information, including the COVID nineteen website, dashboard, webinars, and emails resulted in high marks by district stakeholders. The working and learning environment that Dr. Hillman built during his years in the district provides the foundation of trust and flexibility that allows the district to thrive during these challenging times. He has shown himself to be a calm, confident, compassionate, and empathetic leader. Secondly, financial fiscal stewardship. The board recognized Dr. Hillman's exceptional fiscal leadership. His quick and decisive action of freezing discretionary budgets at the onset of the pandemic and the systematic approach of ensuring the use of relief funds puts the district in a better-than-anticipated financial position. Also of note, the district completed five construction projects on time and within budget. Under Dr. Hillman's leadership, Northfield Public Schools demonstrates an unwavering commitment to strong financial stewardship. Lastly, Dr. Hillman's district equity work. Dr. Hillman's commitment to building on the district equity work has been outstanding, especially in light of the pandemic's competing and urgent priorities. He truly believes in the importance of equity. He has continued to review in curriculum, procedures, policies, symbols, personnel, and students through an equity lens to ensure that everyone feels represented and that their voices are heard. The anti-racism framework Dr. Hillman developed has guided long-lasting systemic changes that are visible on a number of fronts. In summary, board members gave Dr. Hillman an exceedingly positive mid-year performance appraisal. There is no question that the past, the past six months, or really the last ten months, have been the most challenging of his professional career. The board, our district staff, and our entire community owes Dr. Hillman a debt of gratitude for his phenomenal work in handling the challenges of the pandemic. The board is confident he will continue to face the challenges head-on and we will emerge a stronger district and community. So thank you. Really, it was a, it was really a wonderful opportunity for the board to celebrate your your incredible work. So I would like to ask board members if they have any comments they would like to share with Dr. Hillman. Jeff?
Thank you. Good job. Keep it up.
Cory?
As a new board member, I don't have much experience in the official capacity, but as a candidate for office, Dr. Hillman made himself available for my mini-questions and after being elected was also more than welcoming and available to help me get up to speed. So thank you for that and look forward to working with you.
Excellent. Tom?
I was just gonna say, if he gets a thumbs up, he'll merge it for me.
This is very big. Amy? Just thank you for all your exceptional work during this time and, um, you know, continuous improvement. And it's always your mantra and amazed that even during the pandemic, you've kept up with that as well. Thank you.
Great. Noel?
Dr. Hillman, your leadership in the community is a gift to the community.
Thanks, Noel.
Glad to be, you just tried to be a part of this school district and you you've just done so much for the whole community, not just the school district. And I, I love this sentence about calm, confident, compassionate, and empathetic leader. That says it all.
Thank you. Excellent. Well, thank you to the board for your, for your work in completing the evaluation. And we all know Dr. Hillman is one who is quick to give shout-outs to to anyone. And so it was really, uh, really gratifying for the board to be able to do that for you. So, thank you.
And I thank all of you. Um, as you all know, I told all of you, I do not take your confidence or your trust for granted. And I will continue to work as hard as I can to continue to earn that from you, from our staff, from our parents, and from our students every day, uh, to make sure that they have faith in the system. That's the number one thing that we can do is make sure that people have faith and confidence in the system. And Julia is right about shout-outs. I am the beneficiary of a whole bunch of people who do great work and make me look pretty good. One of them is sitting in the back, Anita Ozzy. I could not do the work that I do without her. And we talked about the fiscal stewardship and I get to be the mouthpiece, but we all know that Val Murdistorf is the brains behind it, right? So, you know, Val is the one that came for, we have to freeze these budgets right now. And it was, of course, you say yes. And so, well, you've got that, you saw Kim Bruski. Erin Bailey's exceptional work to engage learners from the youngest that they are, all the way till uh, they are senior citizens and our principals and all of the staff that do a great job every day. It's my privilege to get to serve these people every day. And it's really um pretty inspiring when you work with people who are very capable. Sometimes we forget that because so many people are capable here in this school district that we think it's the norm. And I've worked other places and what I will tell you is, well, lots of people bring their A-game. We have so many people that bring their A-game in this district every day. It is, you can't help but get up with a spring in your step. So thank you for your confidence and I will continue to do my best to earn it.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I did think that it was an amazing and well-timed segue to be able to now introduce, uh, for the next, uh, financial update, Val Murdistorf, our director of finance, because yes, that was going to be my comment, is the fiscal stewardship that we um, that that we proved day in and day out is in a very large part due to you. So thank you for that. And so, financial update.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, so pretty brief update today. Um, we did, um, last meeting, I meeting, I had given you an estimate of the second round of the Esser funding. And that estimate I gave you was just shy of about one-point-three million. And that was a calculator that was shared through the National Association of School Business Officials that the federal government had calculated. And we now have the estimate from the Department of Ed here in Minnesota. And it's about one, I pulled it up, one million, one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. So, a little bit less than the other calculator, but again, it was an estimate at that point. Usually, MBE doesn't share out numbers unless they're pretty confident that that's what you're going to get. So, I feel pretty, pretty good that that's where we'll be getting that funding. We're still waiting on more information about when it'll be available and how to access it in the budget process for that. So, we're still kind of just waiting for those pieces to get dropped on from the state. And then we'll make sure that we're on top of that and have a process to spend that effectively. Outside of that, I think that was the biggest one I had, although there, we're still just finalizing the reconciliation for the CRF funding that had to be spent by December thirtieth. So, as we're getting all the end-of-year stuff in the system, we're wrapping that up and working with the state to do that. But I think those are the big ones for right now. There hasn't been a whole lot of movement on anything. So, not too much to update from my end. But if you have any questions about that or anything else, I would gladly answer them.
Dr. Hillman, you have a comment?
Val, I just want to ask. I think the MBE estimate was for the ninety percent of the Esser and not the, and the, so we still stand to get the additional ten percent from the GEAR funding. I think that might be the difference. Or was what you got?
Oh, are they doing both again?
That's what I understand. And they have not completed how the ten percent is going to be yet. But I think what you talked about is-
Great. I misunderstood that.
I think it's just the ninety percent that we've got right now, right?
Yeah. The number I gave you is the ninety percent.
And the, because the CARES funding has two buckets. And the last time was that ninety-ten. And I know what MBE is sure about right now is the ninety percent. And I have not heard what, what the plan is with the ten percent, but I had understood it was possible. I've seen some runs that would suggest that we're going to get that ten percent as well. But I think we're still waiting since that pot of money is, is more geared to what the state wants to do with it.
Yes.
Thanks for clarifying that.
I was trying to keep track of that. So you have CARES funding, and it's Esser and GEAR. And so, not sure what the two different buckets are, but it's, it's good for, because there's using this GEAR and Esser and CARES. And so, it's sort of interesting to be able to keep the sense of the buckets in our, in our thoughts. Thank you, Val. Questions, comments board members have?
I had a couple of questions. So the Esser and then hopefully the additional GEAR, have they given us guidelines of, and I imagine not, because they're just now telling us how much we get, but we don't yet have an understanding of how we can use that, when we have to use it, or anything like that. So hopefully, that's coming at some point.
So, yes, it will be coming. My understanding is that they have basically put the same spending requirements on it. There's like a list of twelve different things that were considered allowable, but they added three additional items. This is the last I saw. And so I can't say it's official, official, because we haven't got it from MBE yet. But one of the items that was added was, I would say, kind of a catch-all that makes it sound like we would be able to pay for some of our staffing. That's been a huge limitation of the current funding because of the way portage was, and most federal funds that we get in general, they have a no supplant rule. And so, we can't use the federal funds to pay for something that we would have already been paying for. Because obviously, the intention is typically to, you know, expand your programming in some way, shape, or form. This was obviously intended to help support the technology needs and all of the different PPE and things that were happening. But the, the dollar amount that we're receiving is pretty robust. And especially with the CRF funding that we got, really, our goal would be to preserve the general fund as much as possible. And so, utilizing that in ways, obviously, that are coherent with all of the rules that they're going to put on place would be ideal. But that's the last I saw. But again, I haven't got that from the Department of Ed yet. That was just some initial guidance that was shared around with some of the state groups. So that, that would be my hope, is that they've expanded it. So it's a little bit more flexible. The, the CARES umbrella with the Esser and the GEAR, the GEAR funding was much more focused towards technology needs and supporting families and students and making sure they were connected and had devices and those sorts of things, as well as mental health of students and staff. That was definitely the focus of that funding. Whereas the Esser funding was a lot more broad. It was, the budget wasn't as specific. So, that's what we're, that's what I've heard. Again, as soon as we have the official in-print guidance, we will share that with the board to make sure that we're up to date on what we can do with it. But that's, my understanding is that it's basically the same set of parameters, but they've added just a handful to make it a little bit more flexible.
Okay. And then I have one other question. We've talked on a few occasions about FRP enrollment and how that had declined. And there was reasons for that, of course. And I'm just wondering with the return of our preschools second, and then February first, we'll have the three-through-five elementary, which is always a, you know, a good, significant portion of our FRP. If you see that, then where we're at with it, and then now with, you know, in-person, if daily, if that will change, or what the government is actually providing now for meal reimbursement, now that we're in an in-person model?
So, the, the FRP number has not changed significantly at all since October, despite numerous efforts to get families to complete application. We did receive some information that they would be looking at a potential different calculation for Title I funding. The FRP number is part of that calculation. And so, we have gotten communication that they're aware of the issue that the free meals is causing and are looking at some alternative solutions for that. The larger one for the district is the compensatory revenue, which is a state calculation. And to my knowledge, I haven't heard anything about that. The, the meals are free through the rest of the school year. And so, there is no incentive at this point for families to fill it out. There, and Dr. Hillman can maybe provide a little bit more information about this, but I know there is a new federal benefit that's tied to your free and reduced status, some debit card or benefit card. I can't think of what it's called. But that, I think is, I think they're hoping will entice families to apply for it. Because if you qualify for free and reduced, you automatically qualify for this other meal benefit, which is some kind of debit card, I think, or some benefits to get food outside of school. So I think that they're hoping that us sharing that message will help increase the enrollment in that program. But again, the, the calculation for the compensatory revenue is as of December thirty-first, or the December first count. So that date has already passed. And I'm not sure if that's actually written in statute where they wouldn't have flexibility with that, or if that's just kind of an MBE practice. That's the date that they've always used for consistency. And so, I don't have any good information about that quite yet, but that's where it stands right now.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just share a little bit about what, so what Val was talking about is called the pandemic electronic benefit transfer. And so, basically, what it is, it's a program that's intended to support students who qualify for free and reduced lunch to be able, they would basically get a debit card that would allow them to purchase food on the days that they are not at school. And there are several ways that you can qualify for that benefit. But one of them is to complete the free and reduced lunch price application. And as Val said, we have done a lot of work to try to get people to complete the application. We have sent all sorts of communications, electronic, via voicemail, right, to our Spanish-speaking families, to a postcard that went to people to try to get them to sign up. And unfortunately, there's not the motivation of, oh, if I don't, you know, take care of this, I'm going to start getting those voicemail messages every Wednesday and Friday from school. So, but we're really doing an all-out effort to try to make sure people know about this. We've included it in our parent updates numerous times because we know this is a great benefit. And we know that, as we see, if you've been paying attention, if you listen to economists, we've got this dichotomy in the economy where we see the stock market going, continuing to go up, yet we see unemployment now taking another dive back down in terms of where more and more people are becoming unemployed. So we know that food insecurity is a real issue. So we're working with people to try to get those things, get them those benefits. The other part is, Val's exactly right. We've seen some movement from the feds that they may go back and use the previous year's data to calculate some of our federal funding that relies on free and reduced-priced lunch. But the compensatory funding from the state, which is really important, also relies on this. And in our legislative update tonight, you're going to see that on the platforms of the major education lobbyist groups are to do a hold harmless, right? And even the governor today, as he announced the Du North Education Plan, talked about a one-time investment in holding districts harmless for reductions in enrollment. Now, I've not seen the details of it, if it also goes into holding harmless on the compensatory yet. But we would need, my understanding is, we would need some kind of state action from the legislature to be able to make that work. And that's a big deal, because it's quite a bit of money that we, we've shared with you, Val. I'm fairly certain it's about a quarter of a million dollars that we would stand-
It's about five-hundred thousand.
So about a half a million dollars that we would stand to not get in revenue because we, because we can't be all that different in the number of people who qualify for free and reduced lunch, pre-introduced lunch this year versus last year. Logic would say we're at the same. I think we'd reasonably argue that we're at a much higher rate because of the joblessness pieces that we've seen. But if we don't complete the paperwork, that the number that we use is not what is truly based upon what people need. So we are going to be advocating at the legislature for a whole harmless for these pieces to make sure that we can get the fun, similar funding to what we got last year.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Val. We rest well at night, knowing you're watching all of this. Thank you. Okay. So, we can move on now to policy committee recommendations. And as you recall, this was in our board's packet at our last meeting. We had chose to just do a quick overview at our last meeting and then delve into it more deeply. Today, at our, at this board meeting, this will still be considered our first reading of these policies. And I, I want to thank Dr. Hillman and Anita Ozzy for their work in the past two weeks to really incorporate some changes that the board has, has discussed. And, and the policies, you can see, have been wordsmithed and made a little more concise. So I think it will be a good effort to review these policies. So, Dr. Hillman?
Yeah. So I think what we'll do is, we'll start with policy one oh three, that would be new. And so, the last time, we had kind of a, what I'd call a Frankenstein complaint and concern policy. We took the MSVA model policy, and then we tried to overlay some things that we were interested in having on top of it. And clearly, as we re-looked at it, we thought we needed to clean it up. So you'll see that this is very different than the policy that we had shared in the packet the last time. At the end of the day, what I am wanting to have here is, since I have, well, since for a long time in this district, we had used what we call the chain of responsibility, which in general, in most cases, if I have a concern, and when we talk about this, we're talking the run-of-the-mill, daily kind of concern that is very appropriate, right, in terms of, in a school environment. And what I really want to emphasize is that I want people to talk to each other rather than about each other. My experience, my twenty-six years of experience, my years as a principal, tell me that when people at the root cause of the issue talk to each other, more often than not, it's a misunderstanding, right? But if they don't talk to each other, people, you know, they, they get kind of upset and they stew about it. And then by the time we talk about it, now the relationship is broken. And we know that if we can get people to talk to each other, that the relationship can be built. So when we talk about a chain of responsibility in general, we're asking people, employee, whomever, to go to the person that they have the concern about, try to work it out with them. If they can't do that, then they would go up to the next level of responsibility. In many cases, that may be the building principle. Depending on what the next layer could be, if it's an employee, it could end up being, you know, maybe to our HR department. If it's a parent, a property owner, a business owner, or a resident, or a student, that next level could be the superintendent. It also might be, depending upon what the nature of the complaint is, could be one of our district-level departments. By way of example, we had a snowstorm over the weekend. Let's say that we had a neighbor at one of our schools who wasn't satisfied how the district's sidewalk was cleared. If they, you know, went to the school and they talked to the principal, and they weren't satisfied with the answer, they would then, of course, go to Jim Colseth in our Buildings and Grounds Department, who is the person who's responsible for overseeing that, with the final stop in the process being the chair of the school board. What we want to do is try to create a process, or cod, I should say, not say create, we should codify the process that we have been using. And then this way, everybody knows what's expected. And of course, there are circumstances where you may not be able to go to the person. Or, we also have some policies that are, that govern things that are fairly serious, that have their own complaint procedure. And so, you'll see in the general statement of policy, we ask people to go back through that and make sure that if it's a, if it's a harassment, a bullying, we already have a process for that. And we direct them to that process because, of course, that's very different than a general concern about a grade, if you will. But what I really think a healthy organization does, is a healthy organization invites concerns to be shared, because concerns are an opportunity to fix a misconception and to build a relationship and to be able to move forward better together. So I know a lot of people get all worried when, oh, we've got a complaint, we've got a concern. As I've said many times before, I'm from New York, and a complaint is a good, it's a good way to get an opportunity for us to improve. So I want to try to take this off of the, oh, my God, we have a concern. Yep, we've got a concern. We have a process how to handle that. We're giving people, I am going to change the name. I, we call it a form. We actually create a worksheet, if you will, for people to work through the process. I had used the term form, but in talking with a couple of board members, I think that the truth is, it's really kind of worksheet for people to have a process that I can keep notes for myself, so that if I have to go to the next level in the chain of responsibility, that I can have, have I talked, yep, I've talked to that person. Here's what the concern was. Here's, here's why we didn't get it resolved. That's really a tool for the parent or the person with the concern, just to be able to help guide them through the process. Because I, I understand it can be, I'm not sure I want to say something. We're fine with people saying something. We want to give them the tools to be able to complain or share concern productively, if that makes sense. So, I think that this would really put, you know, it really codify the way that we have tried to do this before. And I think that it's a good piece to communicate with people. Yep, this is the way we handle these kinds of things in our school district.
Excellent. Thank you for the context around this. So, board members, questions or comments? Again, there was a lot of changes from what was the rough draft at our last meeting. Amy?
First, I just want to say, this is so much better than the last draft. So thank you for really thinking it through and making it clear, because I think that'll be a benefit to everyone in the future as I go through this. And that's my main comment. I already talked to Dr. Hillman, a couple of small edits. But other than that, I think it's a great policy. Thank you.
Excellent. Other questions or comments?
Just a comment to, thank you. Just a comment to, thank you, thank the process for the worksheet and having a, some paper or so, you know, if problems come up again in the future, you can, oh yeah, we did this, or, you know, two years ago and that's how we resolved it. So thanks. Do that.
No.
Regarding the worksheet, who fills it out and where is it finally filed?
Yeah, so no, I, I don't see that the, I see that the, this is a worksheet for the person with the concern or the complaint. It's really a method to help guide them through the process. This is not something that I would see would be filed, which is why I think we need to change the term from form to worksheet. It's not like I complete this and turn this into someone. They may, you know, someone might use it and share it with you, but really, this is intended to be a tool for the stakeholder to guide them in that process. There's a couple of minor changes I'm going to, in that worksheet on the third section where it says C policy, we're going to try to actually lay out what it, what would the step be for. There's one part we refer back to the policy because it's a little bit long-winded, but we're going to try to shrink the font and put that all in the worksheet. So I like to keep things to one page if I can, but I recognize we might not be able to do that here.
Other questions, comments?
I was going to say, just piggybacking on what you said, Matt, is that not just codifying the process, but continuing to cultivate a culture that we want people to resolve their issues in a, in a way that's respectful for all the parties and then also respectful that people don't just automatically go to the highest title in the process, you know, but that they're going through the steps. So I appreciate that. And I also just, also on step C, and I think there's a way of, as I just referred to the policy, to add some notes there. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, good, excellent work. So we will then approve this as item for individual action, policy 103. We can move on then to policy 417.
Yes, so when we start to take a look at policy 417, and again, I want to just take a step back and remind you that we are looking at, we're, we're trying to look at every single policy every four years, right? So, I want to be clear, there's no specific reason that this one would just happen to be the next one on the list, right, in terms of some of the things that we've been looking through. So really what you see is we see a number of different changes in this particular one that came through from the School Boards Association. You see the underlying and the strike-through pieces. I've had a number of different pieces of feedback from some board members, just about some suggested what I would consider to be minor but impactful changes. By way of example, talking about both chemical use and abuse, you'll see there's some terms interchanged, that throughout the whole policy. We're going to look at how we can, we're going to look at how we can frame that at the beginning to, to use both terms so that they're, it's upfront. But again, a lot of this is School Board Association changes since the last time that we adopted this. I know some people had had some questions the last time around what was called, is called the pre-assessment team. And I just want to clarify, because if you look in our school district, we don't, you're not going to see the word pre-assessment team, you know, specifically identified anywhere. But the pre-assessment team is baked into the work of a committee that every building has called the student support team. And so if a person has a concern about any concern about a student, they go to the student support team. And that student support team does serve as a pre-assessment team if there is concerns about the student and any kind of chemical use. So I just wanted to explain that because I know some people had some questions about that the last time, that the pre-assessment team, which we, we wrote that in to say, talked about the student support team explicitly to make sure that people in the district know that that's the way that we handle that. So those are the main things I would indicate right away. Otherwise, I think it's really some updates. And whenever you do an update from MSBA, a lot of times it's because some kind of statute has changed or they're, they are making it more clear based upon feedback that they get from the field.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments?
I had talked to Dr. Hillman about this. On, under the student section, for part E, there's the consent where apparently a state statute allows a minor to agree to treatment for issues perhaps dealing with alcohol and drug abuse that doesn't require any other person, i.e. an adult. And, you know, we have another policy, what was it, 516 or something, that, that deals with giving out drugs in, in school and, you know, to give aspirin, you need parents' permission to do that. And here, they're, they're allowing kids to get treatments by whomever, professionals, I would assume. And that takes away the parents' great responsibilities. Who pays for it? If things go south, who's liable? You know, if, if a kid says, yeah, you can give, give me treatment and give me those, that medication, then the parent knows that there's, you know, you can't have that medication, it'll cause this problem. You know, it just opens up a whole, a whole host of potential issues. So I think that needs to be looked at and maybe updated or taken out altogether. And then in part F, point two, there are procedures that include, and it says, in the last sentence, it says, a procedure must include contact with the parent or guardian in case of a minor soon. So it's like they're at odds with each other. So anyway, I know Dr. Hillman will look into that, but I wanted to bring it up that it just, to me, as a parent, it just doesn't seem right that the school district or the, or whomever that, that entity is can essentially be the parent if the child agrees to it. So I think that it needs to be looked into.
Yeah, and we're going to review this. I've got a list of things I'm going to be talking with our friend Terry Morrow from the School Boards Association about. And again, one of the things that we always have to want to make sure that we're careful about is that our policy does align, you know, with state statute. Now, we can make some additions, right? We can modify it slightly for our own use, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're putting ourselves in a position where we are following state law. And I think that, my understanding of this provision is really about those students who might fear that if their parent were to learn of this, that there could be some other kind of retribution or abuse or things like that. And so this is a way, right, because we know that in, in most cases, that that's not going to be an issue and the parent, of course, is very supportive. But at the same time, we just, I think, I think that that's where this part is coming from. But I do understand that the issue is that if we, I think the issue is that if, we have to be very careful because there's a mixed message about you have to have a permission to be able to get Tylenol, but not for something that I think most people would consider. So I think it's an issue because you're trying to create a policy that governs all circumstances and while at the same time, some of those circumstances, in some cases, could be dire for some students. And so we'll, we'll ask the question further about what is, we understand this is part of state statute, is there another piece that we can do? And also the part that it conflicts a little bit with that next section certainly is a reasonable question.
Great, Tom. Amy?
I just want to add to what Tom said because there are other parts of this that conflict. There are a couple of other places that talk about notifying the parents. So they're just, someone needs to think it through completely. So on page four, paragraph B, reports of chemical use and abuse, 1B, the administrator will notify the student's parents, it says right there. And then on the next page with the pre-assessment team, paragraph C3, it again talks about the, in the case of a minor, that, you know, they tell the student's parents. So someone needs just to figure out how those all relate to each other.
Yes. That's why we do a first reading.
Yeah, excellent comments. Other comments, board members? My only question would be, would, would we be able or, or want to consider, instead of saying pre-assessment team, to just name it student support team?
Um, yes, I think we can, and I'm fairly certain, Anita, we changed that, didn't we, to include, I think we referenced the student support team at one point?
In this policy?
Yes. No, okay, we'll, we'll go back and take a look at that, too.
So then to that and under E, where it's school and community advisory team, would that also be a student support team? Or is it advisory team, something?
Yeah, so I would say that the school and community advisory team is more like the Rice County Coalition for Chemical Health. And so we, we did make some modifications there, or we plan to make some modifications there to work through how to, how, what our responsibility is in that area, right? Because I can't, I can be a convener, right, but if we all know to make chemical prevention, drug prevention work in our community, it has to be an all-hands-on-deck situation.
Okay.
And so making sure that we're not totally in charge of work here at the table.
Okay, I understand that now. Great, thank you. Okay. Excellent, excellent. Changes to 417. Thank you for everyone's good work. 420 would be the next policy.
Yes, and again, I think what you'll see is some fairly minor additions or modest additions in this one that are suggested by the School Boards Association.
Anybody have any, anyone have any questions or comments on policy 420? Okay. Oh, Tom, yes.
On section I, I guess it's just one, to section I, point two, where it talks about abstaining from sexual activity until marriage. I understand someone else had some better words for them, you can share what, what those are, but if you, if we could just leave out the, until marriage, but it's probably covered by the state statute again, you know, it's, we're a school district, we're not parents, we're not, you know, once they're young adults, they get to do whatever they want once they turn 18. So I think it's just a bit much, but I'll turn the floor over.
I had suggested the word into adulthood and then we got into that same conversation about state statute. And then I just suggested that maybe just an additional parentheses or additional statement that just says Northfield Schools is in support of all healthy relationships or something like that.
Yeah, and in that case, as I mentioned, that, that particular, the fact that entire list of items from prevention comes directly from 121A.23. However, I think that there is the ability to potentially add something to it rather, rather than subtracting adding something to it. So I'm going to draft, you know, a, an inclusive statement that would be after that and then I'm going, I am going to ask the School Board Association attorney just to give me some advice on, you know, is there, I don't see a downside to that, right? We can always make some additions to this, but I just want to get, I want to get Terry's opinion on it as well.
Great, thank you.
We're just, you know, it's legal age of 18, so I mean, without making any judgment on it, it's, they're an adult at 18, so what's the position and the legalism within the phrase to put in there?
And I think the key thing is remember that we're not trying to govern people's activity, right? What this part is about what the, what are the components of a program to prevent and reduce the risk of sexually transmitted disease? So, you know, that's the purpose of this one. It's not to govern people's behavior, it's to try to prevent and help people make better decisions for themselves, right? So what you're, I think board members are right, once a person turns 18, they're a legal adult, they're making choices that they want. The point of this particular part of the policy is about the, what is the content of the prevention program? That's the key part. And I think we can go above and beyond. You know what state statute says, but at the same time, we certainly need to make sure that it aligns with what it says in the, in the statute.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. So then our last policy for review is 422.
422 is one of my favorite policies because it says all of these policies also apply, in this case, to employees as well. So it really is just an effort to make sure that people know that there are some policies that are in different sections of the policy manual, but that also apply to employees. And so that's the key part of this and it's pretty much what it, it's exactly what it says it is.
Okay. Any questions or comments on 422? Amy?
In general, I'm fine with the idea behind it. I'm just a little concerned about not knowing what all the other policies are and saying, well, this applies to this. You know, so when you see a policy that's called student activities and you say it applies to employees too. So along that line, I'm just going to say, I assume we'll be reviewing these policies over the next few years, with the intent of clarifying how they apply to employees and incorporating that piece of it.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. So again, a lot of really good changes noted. These will be an item for individual action on February 8th. Okay, so we can move on to COVID-19 response and operations update. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I'm delighted to share with you the update this evening. We're going to cover a couple of different areas. The first thing is we'll start a little bit with just some highlights of the district's ongoing anti-racism work. And in this report, I specifically want to share with you about the work that happened to reflect upon Dr. King's birthday. And so a couple of key parts and something that I now realize I did not include in my report is that we had Northfield Schools involved in the Human Rights Commission's celebration in a number of different ways. As I highlight, Bridgewater Principal Nancy Antoin was the keynote speaker at the community event via Zoom this year. And if you've not watched her testimonial, I believe that you can watch it on the Human Rights Commission website. It's very powerful. And I think that for those of us who are white and with privilege in this community, like to hear the experience of a person of color growing up in our state and how profound of an impact, especially for a child, and how a person that still recalls those things very clearly later in life, I encourage all of you to watch it. I encourage everyone in the community to watch it because I think it's really important that we hear how difficult it can be. The second part is I'm very proud to share that Rama Abdullai, who is one of the presidents of our Northfield High School Black Student Union, was named the Human Rights Award winner this year. And Rama is a senior going to attend Metcalloster College, and she's been an integral part of our racial equity, Northfield Promise Racial Equity Team. And so we are so proud of Rama and the work that she has done. And so I should have included that in this report and I did not. So I'm talking about that right now. Rama is a great representative of Northfield Public Schools. She is a truth teller who says exactly like it is and cares so deeply about Northfield Public Schools and making sure that our vision is realized of preparing every student for lifelong success. So that Human Rights Commission event online, about 120 people participated, another wonderful event, different, obviously, like all other things this year, but I wanted to highlight that. And then I also shared with you a note that all of our building principals collaborated on to send home on Dr. King's birthday to really emphasize thinking through how we can reflect on Dr. King's amazing legacy and how we can leverage that work today. So those are two updates, just from our anti-racism work that we continue on. But I just want to share an update on our return to campus plan. We are moving forward with the plan that we established in December. Our pre-K through two students are back and it has been just great to be in school buildings and see their shining faces. And, you know, if you remember back in the fall, there was a lot of concern about whether small children could wear masks effectively. They can. And it isn't that some students don't need reminders, right? There are students who need reminders. But guess what? I see a lot of adults in the grocery store who sometimes need reminders, too. And so I'm so proud of our students. We did some work ahead of time to try to make sure that we are preparing families for those protocols again. But by all accounts from my building principals for the first week from food service, it went well. Very pleased. And again, this week has started off fine as well. Next week, on Monday, we welcome our third through fifth grade students back and we're excited to welcome them back. And then on February 2nd, we are going to welcome back, at this point, remember, all of this is, is a 8:29 on January 25th because this can all change very quickly, but we are still planning at this point to bring back our sixth through 12th grade students into a hybrid model. And you will notice that the number at the county level is still above 60, right? And if we look at that grid, that the, the table, the learning model parameter table that govern- that Governor Wall has announced on July 30th, the average person in the public will say, well, wait a minute. How come that number is so much higher, you know, than what the grid says? And yet we're going to bring students back to school? Well, we have had a week over week, six weeks in a row, where the Rice County number has dropped. Right? So we're continuing to see the number going in the right direction. I believe this week will actually be at a lower number than what we were when we put students into distance learning in November. So we're going in that right direction. And as we really reflect upon what those county numbers mean, we look at how do we localize those numbers to Northfield, talking with county public health people about what is the situation in Northfield versus just the county? And then we think about our ability to implement these safety protocols. We have a, we have a strong history in the fall of being able to effectively implement the safety protocols at the middle school and high school. We were participated, Cheryl Hall and I participated in a consultation, the required consultation with the Department of Health. We walked through our plans with them, and they had no objections to the plans. And furthermore, they said that they thought we had a solid plan and said it was well thought out. They did emphasize that because of the changing nature of the pandemic, we have to be ready to shift back to distance learning. I also will tell you that I've shared with you before, we had a concern that just a week ago, we would have had 19 active high school cases. That means there were 19 cases that were within the 14-day window when they were initially reported. Almost all of those cases look like they're in the window of right after the New Year's holiday. As of yesterday, we were back down under five cases. That's how quickly they can come off, right? So we felt that the number within the building was also going in the right direction to be able to support a return to campus. So that's what the plan is at this point. The other thing that we hear is that as we continue to learn more about schools and their safety protocols in the pandemic, one of the things that public health people will tell you is that they like kids being in school because it's a predictable environment. There are also a number of research studies that are coming out that are saying that the transmission with this, in a school usually is reflective of what's happening in the community. And that it's not, that the school is not the engine that is driving it. So not saying that that means we're not going to end up back in distance learning at some point this year. It's very possible. I think we've learned a lot. I think we know that our protocols can work. We will have more cases. There's no question about that, right? We know that we'll have more cases. But we are also starting to see some other things come into play, more rapid testing, vaccination, and those kinds of things that should help the cause. So our, Julie Pritchard is on our incident command team. We have met every Friday morning for quite some time now. And for the past three weeks in a row, we've gone through the data. And I've asked that team that includes Julie, it includes other members of our administrative team, it includes people from public health, they haven't been able to attend the last couple of weeks, a local physician and parent, it's a teacher, an educational assistant, a student. And the consensus of that team for three consecutive weeks is yes, this is the right plan, and it's time to move forward. So we are looking to welcome those students back for second semester. And again, we will be keeping a very close eye on the data. We'll be doing contact tracing and making sure that we know, you know, if, when we do have cases to verify that our protocols are working. I did also want to share with you just an update about testing and vaccination. Last week was our first week of the state-sponsored semi-monthly staff testing. So I have a testing. We had 124 staff members participate in that first round. Please keep in mind, a number of people are still working from home, right? Because we only had pre-K two people officially on campus. We think about vaccination. As I've shared with you, we've had a great partnership with Northfield Hospital and Clinics. And we know that about 70 employees have already been scheduled to get their tier one vaccine, tier one A vaccination through the hospital. Now, that number could be potentially up to 140 employees. But we're really looking at the definition of tier one A is with the hospital to make sure that they are only vaccinating our teachers and our educational assistants and other people who duties fall within that tier one A. Last week, we also had the surprise announcement that there are now nine vaccination sites throughout the state and that teachers were, teachers and educators were part of this next round of vaccinations. There were 10, we had 10 slots last week. And it took us a little bit to fill them because, you know, it was a surprise. So people, when we had to call people and say, hey, we've got an opportunity for vaccination, there were some people that might have had a medical procedure planned and were worried, how might that impact their ability to have that medical procedure? Or someone who has another health condition that they're concerned about how that. So we worked through that. We had all 10 slots filled. And I talked to several people who had been vaccinated and that just, you can just see the relief that people have. Today, we learned that they're creating another round of it and that this week we have 33 slots available. And so I want to thank Cheryl Hall and Anita Ozzy and Jordan Stride from our office who are working with the prioritization matrix that I shared with you. We're using the prioritization matrix that was originally developed by Rochester Public Schools. We've added in some of our pieces and then also worked with the MDE document. And that's how we're working through it. This week, we are now adding another layer to that to survey staff to ask them, are you interested in the vaccine? Because the inefficiency that we had last week and into early this week is if we are contacting people and there are people who are not interested in a vaccine, we've wasted our time. And not that it's a waste of time, but it's just less efficient to contact people who aren't interested. The good news is, this is rolling. And what the governor has said is the purpose of these regional sites, and ours is in Rochester, is so that as the vaccine becomes more available, we have the systems in place. Really what we did is prototyped it last week, right? They made continuous improvement. They made changes this week, including changing the metro area and adding more doses. This is all good as we get the ball rolling. So vaccination is going, we still have a hard road ahead of us, right? If you listen to anything, Dr. Fauci said over the weekend, if, to get to where we think we'd be getting close to herd immunity based upon the current schedule, we're still looking at probably fall, right, before we, but there is hope on the horizon. It doesn't mean that we can let our guard down because we're going into the next wave here where we have some concerns. We are, just so people know, we're watching about the variants. We're trying to understand the variants. But I think Dr. Fauci also said something very powerful that said, the variants don't matter if we stop the spread, if we do the protocols and we stop the transmission. So we can be worried about the variants, but the key thing is if we follow the protocols and we work on that, if you stop the chain of transmission, you're going to stop the mutation because the virus can't mutate if it can't transmit, right? So we're going to double down on those pieces. We're going to keep advocating for people to wash their hands and all those kinds of things because those good old fashioned stuff that we've been talking about for a year are really important. Two final things here tonight. I gave you a portage update. What you'll see is a number of people coming back to campus. And our anecdotal data, there's been a lot of counseling from our portage staff with parents about what the right thing for them is to do. Now, there are some people who have had a negative experience with the system. Completely, I mean, we don't run anything where everyone is completely happy, right? But I want to honor and recognize that there are some families who the model did not work for them. We knew that that would be the case. We did everything that we could to try to not allow that, but it does happen. The majority of the people who are coming back are coming, they're telling our staff that they're coming back because they feel comfortable having their student back on campus. And they feel that it is safe and practical for them to come back. So you'll see the in and the out there, or the, excuse me, you'll see the enrollment and those leaving for campus. The tentative second semester enrollment is exclusive of those people leaving. So that, the number of people leaving are already taken out of the total. So those are the real numbers for the people who are tentative second semester enrollment. And then the final piece I just want to share is that we're continuing to work on updating the names of the schools. I anticipate that our next meeting, you will have the names for both the change of the Sibley School and the change of this building. And the high school mascot refresh is still on track. In fact, the deadline for those images were last Friday, I believe. And so we are starting to get that committee together to elevate the top three, that we would then have Newger Communications assist us with polishing those to a certain extent. And we're still on track. They'll be getting these to you as, as long as everything keeps moving forward by March. So that is my report this evening, and I appreciate your time and sharing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, good stuff. Amy?
I have three questions for you.
Yep.
The first is, how many employees are there in the school district?
Approximately 600 regular employees. When we go beyond that, we're, we do over 1,000 W-2s a year because we have a number of other people who are casual employees that they're, they're not full-time employees, but they're people who we do pay because they do some kind of work for the school district. So we typically use around 600 employees as our run-of-the-mill daily average kind of thing.
So which number are you using for the vaccinations?
Yeah, right now, we're using the 600 and then plus some as we get through. One of the things I give you by way of example, our substitute teachers are people who we would consider to be casual employees. They're not included in that 600, but we're putting them into the prioritization. They're not in this version of the prioritization matrix, but they are in the version that we're just modifying this week.
All right. And my second question is, now that sports have started up again, what is your, is there any concern about the risk, specifically with sports and COVID and having that come back from other schools? Or, you know, and how are you handling it?
Yeah, so I think that what public health folks would tell us is that, you know, athletics is a vector for transmission. We know that that's the case. That's what the experience was in the, in the fall. However, what I'll tell you is I think we've learned a lot. And I really want to compliment Joel Olson, our Activities Director, and the coaches. I met with Joel Olson, Joel Lear and myself, met with all the coaches for the winter sports at the beginning of the season. And we talked about the importance of following the protocols. I visit with Joel Olson, our Activities Director, every day during the first week of practice at around 5 o'clock or so. He would visit practice sites each day and was very impressed with the level of commitment and compliance with all of the safety protocols. Are there going to be, are, will there, have there been cases in athletics across the state? Yes, we know in other communities so far, we've had entire teams that have been shut down, you know, for a couple of weeks. We will probably have that at some point as well, right? The, just the law of averages. But what I would say is that the coaches and the athletes understand how important following the protocols are for them completing their season. So that's a very important part. I've talked with you before, too, about we did purchase some of our own tests that we're going to be working on creating a voluntary testing program for student athletes. We've got a very small number to start. We're looking to start that very quickly here. And so we can, we're going to be talking with our student athletes about that this is, will be a great way for us to make sure that if there's an issue, we can catch it early and that we can try to be able, have you be able to complete your season. We've also heard that there's some additional potential coming from the state around that. We've not heard when it's coming, but we know that we've heard some, we've heard some chatter about the possibility of going to some of the rapid tests, the binocs, for example, which is a rapid, it's not a PCR test, but it would be, it could be a great screener. And we know in some of the college athletics, not just at the University of Minnesota, but in some other Division II that the state is working with them. They're starting to see how they're able to use that in those. So I wouldn't be shocked if we have something like that more en masse before the end of the winter sports season.
Okay. And my third question is about with the reduced number of portage students, will that affect our staffing of portage?
Yeah, it's a great question. And we are not planning to adjust our staffing of portage, right? So when we, first of all, our elementary, we've had, as you've seen, there are some elementary students who are coming out, but it isn't enough to where we are going to modify or reduce any sections there. And then at the secondary, when you see people leaving that again, we would see those case, what I'm going to call caseload for each portage learning coach, ebb and flow a bit. And then we added some graders, some portage graders to help with the grading. And we believe that the number of people we have is satisfactory and that we don't want to actually diminish the support for portage because even with a fewer number of students, we still have, if you calculate, we're still well over 500 students in that program. It's the size of a small elementary school, or it's the size of one of our elementary schools, if you think about it. And so we started this as a way for families to be able to have an all-the-time online experience during this year. And we are using it now. How can we leverage, as Kim Bursky said, how can we leverage this learning and this potential model after the pandemic? So we don't plan on reducing. In fact, we plan on keeping all of that in place as it was basically for the first semester.
I'm really glad to hear that because from the beginning, you've always said that the relationships are the most important thing. And these staff members have had the chance to develop these online, you know, relationships with the students. And it would be, I think, hard for everyone to pull the rug out from students and tell them now that we're working with them different. So.
And I just can't say enough about the work that our portage team has done. You know, Hope Langston and Kerry Dubar are doing the day-to-day leadership of that work. And the staff members are on a roller, this is, we've never, every day is new, right? Through the whole school year. And so I really applaud and appreciate the way that people have embraced that change. It's not been easy. It has been very challenging. And yet they keep coming back and they keep problem solving. And mistakes have been made. You know, we've made mistakes. You know, I often will say, sometimes we learn more about how not to do this, right? Than how to do it. But we also didn't waste the pandemic in terms of this. We didn't just add this on to people already teaching a full load. Quality before talked about the synchronous and the asynchronous. In many districts, they just added the all-the-time online students to the caseloads or to the loads of the teachers who are teaching people in person. Not going to judge how other districts did. What we tried to do is how can we leverage this year to learn how we can do this full-time moving forward? We are meeting this week to work on submitting our formal application to the state to have online learning school status.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, great. The, actually, the online status is a good segue to the legislative.
Good.
Because there's some conversation there about streamlining the application process for online, an online academy, so to speak, but we can get to that. So thank you for this update. We appreciate it and all the great work. So we can move into our next item or last item for discussion actually, which is legislative update and the Legislative Action Committee concept. Dr. Norman, do you want to start?
Yeah, so we know that the legislature has convened. They are working, albeit differently than normal. We know that today, the governor announced his plan called the Do-North Plan for Education. And what I just, I did not have a chance to print that for you, but really focuses on seven different areas. Meeting the needs of students during and after the COVID-19 pandemic. Making sure that every student receives a world-class education. You know how I love when they use the word every? Every student learns in a safe and nurturing environment. Every student learns in a classroom with caring and qualified teachers. Expanding access to opportunities for students of color and indigenous students. Expanding access to opportunities for students in greater Minnesota. And then the final one, which is really important because you can't do any of the rest without it is to fund a 21st century education. Within each of those areas, there's four or five different sub-bullets that they are pointing on that's going to be part of the legislation that they're looking at introducing. So this is going to be a big piece because the governor's proposal, as you know, has a, has a huge component. We're going to start to see some of the budgeting pieces come out this week. And the legislature will continue to churn, and we know that they're not going to get done. We'll be lucky if they get done on time this year, right? The purpose of this update is to share with you a couple of items from two platforms that are organizations that we belong to. And I'm not going to go through both of them because you all can read it and I know that you're going to do it. But I want to focus on, is that I want you to take a look at how the policy or the priorities, the legislative priorities overlap, right? And the School Boards Association, the Schools for Equity and Education, and other organizations work hard to make sure that while we're, they're advocating for their own individual groups and the, what their groups are looking for, that they are also trying to look at the same thing. So some of the key things that I want to share, I'm only going to really highlight a couple of them. What I'm going to really highlight is the hold harmless. And I'd like you to look at the Schools for Educational Equity platform under the 2021 legislative priorities. And you'll notice the first thing is holding school districts harmless on funding fluctuations during the pandemic. And so they're looking at making sure that we can use the better of the two revenue streams for general ed, for special ed, and for review spice lunch. That's what we talked about before. This is huge. It's a big deal. Remember, we are 67 students less than we were last year, based on our projections. And that equates to some real money. And so the key thing is, and we're, we're a district that is in the middle on this. There are some that have lost less, but there are many who have lost a lot more. And so this is a really huge piece, and it would be a one-time investment, right? Because it's just making sure that we don't go backwards, that we stay where we're at. In fact, that is part of the reason that the state's budget surplus went up is because they're not having to spend as much money on public education because of the students who have chosen private schools or homeschools. Because remember that even at the state level, the investment in education is around the investment in terms of the enrollment. So that's a big piece. And then again, I just really want to focus on making sure that you see that we are looking at that 2% increase to the per pupil basic formula. You know, we get about 70% of our revenue from the state, so that's huge. We love state equalization. That's what Schools for Equity and Education is all about. So we're looking at equalization. And then again, looking at special ed cross subsidy. We cannot let our, we have to be relentless on that one, right? So we made some headway. So we made some headway the last time around, but again, trying to slow the growth of that special education cross subsidy. And then of course, on policy, we are just asking, you have told us how great of a job that we have done during the pandemic. Don't give us anything else new to do right now. So when there's a lack of money, they tend to like to give us policy stuff. And so really what we want to do is be very careful on the policy part, that we do not have any new mandates that do not have the corresponding funding to go along with them. So that would be just a very high-level legislative update. We are far from this. I will tell you that I've also just on a local level, I have worked with Representative Lippert and Senator Dreheim, who are both going to introduce a bill for us around charter school governance. There are some technical issues with when we reauthorize as a, when we recertify as a charter school authorizer. There are some things that another part of legislation, much like we talked before about conflicting policies, there's another part of legislation that would suggest that we have to do less than what we're required to do to get recertified as an authorizer. We think it's just a, an oversight in how they wrote the previous legislation. So Representative, we've worked with the House, the folks who write the legislation, the House researchers, they've written the two bills. Senator Dreheim emailed me today saying that they're going to introduce that legislation in the Senate this week. Representative Lippert assured me that he's also going to be the chief author on it as well in the House. So it doesn't help us now, we're recertifying right now, but five years from now, when we have to recertify again, it would make the process less onerous for us to become, to recertify as a charter school authorizer. So that's the report. I'm going to turn it over to Julie to talk about Legislative Action Committee.
Well, again, great segue because it's talking about how Dr. Hillman works so well with our local legislators. And so as a background to, to this concept of a Legislative Action School Board Committee really came out of the discussion I have as a board chair with each board member. And it's always a great opportunity, opportunity for me to talk to board members about what interests them and where their passions are and we kind of try to very match that up with the different assignments that we have as, as board liaison assignments. So my discussion this year kind of evolved to be really fun and exciting and exhilarating for me when I spoke with Claudia and Cory. And we were talking about the Schools for Equity and Education that, you know, I have always been the liaison or in the recent years. And they had expressed, both Cory and Claudia had expressed really strong interest in really advocating with legislators. And so we, we, when we had talked, it kind of evolved to, wow, maybe, you know, we should actually have a subset of board members who actually are going to dedicate some time and effort to intentionally advocate with our legislators. And certainly as board members, we understand how important that is to advocate, but it's really up to, you know, the time and effort that you have. And certainly as board members, we are getting emails from MSBA and C Weekly to say, here's an action alert that not always aware of what we're doing as, as a board. And I think Dr. Hillman has been incredibly effective and dedicated to that work of developing those relationships with our legislators. In fact, one, one legislator said, you know, I always email superintendents and say, how is this particular bill going to impact Northfield schools? Give me some feedback or your particular district. And he said, I don't often ever hear from superintendents. I hear from Dr. Hillman every single night. So that takes a lot of effort. So I think if we can have, you know, the, a subset this year, I would, I would propose that we start with Claudia and Cory and I as, as the initial three and then we would, you know, obviously rotate off as we do on our other liaison positions. But I think that, you know, the three of us can really utilize MSBA and C. One thing MSBA is doing now is a Friday morning chat room where you can just kind of hear what happened in the week and Cory and I were able to, to log on and hear Denise from MSBA talk about the week. And so it kind of helps us see how things are progressing, you know, legislation that we know impacts us from, and all districts really statewide. But I think the nuance for Northfield Public Schools and in particular, Dr. Hillman just highlighted is the charter school authorization piece. And so I think it would be, it would be really beneficial for us not only to be advocating with our legislators as elected officials and constituents, you know, as board members, but secondly, that we understand the nuances to the legislation and how it impacts Northfield Public Schools. So we would be setting up an established communication line with Dr. Hillman to understand as, as legislation is pending and evolving and changing and we're asked to weigh in on that, the comfort level for the board is always, I have an opportunity as a board member to do that, but I understand that there are three board members who are kind of on it for us and able to, to take the time to, to respond and to be really intentionally advocating. What we would see in the future would be that a Legislative Action Committee would be set up similar to our other district committees where we would have staff members, we'd have parents, community members and students. And there is a, a very strong footprint in the, in statewide for this. Edina has a very strong Legislative Action Committee, Centennial, White Bear Lake, Hopkins, I said Hopkins or Edina first, but both Hopkins and Edina. So there are communities statewide that do it really well. And I think that legislators respond to board members and constituents in different ways than they do maybe a superintendent. I mean, there, it's another voice, but it often is a very powerful voice because they understand that we're elected officials and we represent the community when we talk to them as well as being constituents. But I think the timing for this is good in that we're going into biennial budget and that one point Denise from MSBA made is that our legislators are really more accessible right now with COVID than they have been. They're all working from home, so the responses are good, the opportunities to, to really work with them. But I think we look at this as really a long-term, long-term strategy for really forging those long-term relationships with the legislators. And I, so I, I was really excited. I had done this previously with more so with, in, in years past, but have quite honestly kind of fallen away from it other than staying abreast of what C and MSBA are doing and, you know, responding to action alerts when I can, but to have the excitement of, of Cory and Claudia who actually has quite a lot of experience from another district she was in, it was just time to say, let's just really make this a more formal and intentional effort that we as, as board members do. So that's, that's what my proposal is around how we would address this coming legislative seat session and then how we would see this committee evolve as, as we move forward. So would have any questions or comments, board members have on this concept? Amy?
I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, I get all the C mailings and the MSBA mailings and the action alerts and sometimes I respond and, but ju, just to know that there's somebody actually paying attention and whom like, like you as a committee, I would welcome you to contact me and say, hey, this is particularly applicable to our district and we're trying to get as many voices to weigh in as possible. It's just nice to have someone that I know telling me this is something good for me to do and not some organization suggesting it. So I love this idea and I think we're all going to be great at it.
Well, thank you. Uh, thank you for your comment. And I had put in there as well that, that we would because, you know, there are opportunities where you realize it's sort of at a precipice where we really need to move on this or this could, you know, additional voices could really make a difference. And I think it is going to be a very, very long, very drawn out session. There's no sort of indication that they would finish anywhere before sometime in June. So we have a long way to go, lots of changes. I did appreciate Dr. Hillman meeting with, with me to kind of rough out a timeline so that we are very intentionally looking far. We would start in the summer and look to the next session, review what happened, look to what we would want to do and then really come back to, for example, tonight, we would have Northfield Public Schools Legislative Platform. So that we would, we would take some of the key, key things that we know are happening, but where should it be nuanced to make sure that, that we're really advocating for what is really best for us at the same time we obviously advocate for strong public education?
Okay, any other questions or comments? So because this is a, a board committee, we will come back to the board at our next meeting for, item for individual action to officially approve this new board committee. So thank you. Okay, and thank you for the legislative update, one of, of many as we, we go the wild, Mr. Told's wild ride through the legislative section. Okay, so that is it for items for discussion. We can go on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were just a few personnel items in the table file that were to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on now. We have two items for individual action. Our first item was a presentation for additional special ed staff for early childhood special education. This was a presentation done by Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall at our previous board meeting. So it is an item for individual actions. So I will ask if there is a motion to approve the request to hire additional special education staff at Northfield Community Education Center for Early Childhood Special Education as presented at the January 11th, 2020 board meeting. At that presentation, the projected cost was $42,574 salary, $29,620. Oh, I'm sorry. Total projected cost is $42,575,000 with approximately 55 cents, 55% of the salary reimbursed through a special education revenue for a net cost of $26,284. That was a long motion. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Cory. Okay, opportunity for questions and comments. No questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Our next item for individual action is the pay equity report. I will ask for a motion because it is an item for an individual action and then we would have opportunity for questions or comments. So is there a motion to approve the January 2021 pay equity report? Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Okay, opportunity for questions and comments on the pay equity report.
And if I can just frame this, you know, we are required to complete a pay equity report every three years, which you're really approving tonight is the submission of the report. And so tomorrow, pending your approval, we'll have our consultant Kathleen Murphy. Kathleen is one of the preeminent pay equity people in the state. She works with us to audit our work and then also to help us complete the pay equity report. We'll be submitting it tomorrow. You'll notice that there are three tests, two of which we are passing, one of which we have some concerns about. And if you, the issue that we have with that third one that we do not believe that the state will pass on at this point is one that is really a result of a certified and non-certified issue as opposed to a gender-based issue. And it's because our teaching contract has 15 steps. Most of our other contracts only have four steps. And so there's a, a way that you can ask for reconsideration from the state if you can prove that. Now, we don't, they did accept that the last time and if they don't this time, we'll have to work through, we have some plans of how we can address this. The pay equity report is important for us to take a look at every three years because it's intended to catch if we were to have any issues brewing, you know, within our pay system to making sure that people are paid equitably based upon their gender. And so we are working with Kathleen to be able to dig into this part. There's a couple of other parts to report that we're just looking for down to the next line, wanting to make sure that we are ahead of the game with any potential issues. So again, you're approving the submission. We have the concern that we know about the one test, the other two that we have passed, but we are really looking at how we can adjust those pieces for the third test.
Okay, thank you for, for the overview. Any specific questions?
So have they compared just straight like the male teachers to the female teachers without the extra, you know, female classes? Are those equitable? And is there any way of comparing the extra people to other districts to see whether our pay is in line with other districts?
Yeah, so remember the state pay equity law, it governs everyone, right? And so school districts are part of that. Regardless of your gender in our teaching contract, you get paid the same, you know, based upon your experience. When they look at you as an organization, they're looking, are there difference between female-dominated classes and male-dominated classes? And in this case, our teaching group is a female-dominated class that take 15 years to get to the maximum pay. Other, other groups that have more, we have more male-dominated classes who have the smaller number of steps. Now, it also doesn't take into account the total amount of pay and a variety of other things. So it is a part that when we, we actually separate out and we take the certified group versus the non-certified, if we take that part out and we only look at the non-certified, we pass easily with it. So it's really a function of the fact that as an organization, we have multiple bargaining groups that have negotiated over the years, a variety of different approaches to how do they get to their maximum salary.
So are the maximum salaries comparable?
They're not comparable. They're exact in, within the certified group.
Okay.
But it's when you bring all of those other groups together, right? And you look at that some groups only have four steps and some groups have, and so the teaching staff, if you're on step, if you're on MA, you know, Masters, step 15, regardless, you know, of your, you get paid the exact same. That part isn't the issue. It's the issue when we have one group that has, specifically one group that has a large number of steps that takes you a long time to get the maximum salary and others where you can get to the maximum salary in four years.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the January 2021 pay equity report for submission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, that is our items for individual action. We can move on to items for information. Paraprofessional recognition week. Dr. Hillman?
Yeah, so this week has been declared as paraprofessional recognition week. And what I want to share is that of course, in our district, we refer to paraprofessionals as educational assistants. Every district calls them, you know, something different. The predominant term in the state is paraprofessionals. But Governor Walz has proclaimed this week as paraprofessional recognition week. There are 20,000 paraprofessionals in Minnesota and I think this year especially, I just encourage everyone in the public, if you know someone who works as an educational assistant in our school, please thank them. These are people who have had the most change in their jobs more regularly because they are working in distance learning, supporting our students on campus, they are working with students who need additional assistance. Then they also have been the main engine to help staff our required essential child, essential worker childcare program. And so we have had to ask these incredible employees to do a variety of different things, a lot of which maybe they weren't, wasn't exactly what they were initially thinking it was going to be. And they have done so in a way that I think can make you as a board proud. So every year, paraprofessional recognition week is important, but this year even more so because when we think about people who have had to demonstrate the most flexibility in terms of their day-to-day work, our, I would argue that our educational assistants are right at the front of the line with the number of changes that they've had to endure. So we're very grateful for their work.
Excellent, thank you. Well said. Just wanted to also remind board members that we need to send headshots to Anita Ozzy when we are able so that that can be on the website until we can gather as a group for a group photo. So future meetings, Monday, February 8th and then Monday, February 22nd. At this juncture, we will plan that we will be in our new board meeting room in the new district offices located at what was formerly Longfellow School. Before we adjourn, I would like to thank Anita Ozzy and Bruce for your work today to set up the room. I know Bruce, you were here for a great amount of time today to make sure that this room was set up and we followed the social distancing guidelines and it's just been really fun to be together tonight and we appreciate everything that it took to get, to get us here.
it took to get, to get us here tonight. And so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noah. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.